Good evening, I'd like to call Village Haynesville Planning and Zoning Commission meeting due quarter for a public hearing on a request for a text amendment to allow installation of solar panels in B1 Commercial Business District and a request for a special use permit to install solar panels at Prairie View School located at 102 Middle Street East Belvedere Road in 632. Call please.
Planning and zoning for Commission Jerry Daly.
Present.
George Duberstein.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Hine here. Dernaski.
Here.
Georgianne Duberstein here. Shannawis.
Okay, we've established the court, we have motion to approve the agenda. So move.
Second.
Planning and zoning for Commission George Duberstein.
Yeah, aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Hine.
Aye.
Dernaski.
Aye.
Georgianne Duberstein.
Aye.
And Shannawis.
Aye.
And Jerry Daly.
Aye. That's okay, I can stand me for that. Alright, so the agenda, an overview, the purpose of the public hearing is to give everyone the opportunity to express their views and to provide evidence in support of those views for the official record. The Planning and Zoning Commission relies on this record for its final conclusions and recommendations to the Board of Trustees. Just a little explanation, since most of us are pretty new to this process, this is the first time we've had a text amendment. What a text amendment does is actually, is a request to change the wording of our zoning code in this particular instance. Our zoning code did allow for solar panels to be installed, but not in, not on the ground, on the ground level in this particular area. So the first part of the text amendment will be requesting permission to allow that, to change that language to allow it. The second part will be a special use permit, whereas the school district is requesting permission to install over solar panels. So the first part then is, Matt Clark, if you'll address the notice requirements.
Okay, all the requirements were met, 11 certified letters were mailed out on November 14th, seven were received back. The notice was published in the Daily Herald on November 16th and the sign was placed in front of the school on November 27th. So everything was satisfied.
Very good. Well, now I am administration of both of all who shall testify, but includes anyone in the audience who wishes to make a statement or comment at any time. Matt Clark?
So everybody needs to stand there as want to speak. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Please. I do swear or affirm.
I do swear or affirm.
To testify truthfully before.
To testify truthfully before.
The Planning and Zoning Commission.
The Planning and Zoning Commission.
Of the Village of Haynesville.
Of the Village of Haynesville.
During the hearing of a special use permit.
During the hearing of a special use permit.
Thank you.
We have a group of people representing the petitioner, District 246, pardon, that's another line. District 46, if you would like to make your presentation at this moment.
So if you would like to hold the microphone.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for having us. We're excited to be here, we're excited for this potential project. I brought with me, first of all, my name is Chris Buller, I'm the Assistant Superintendent over at Graveslake 46. Standing behind me is Mr. Eric Smith, he is from Performance Services, they would be doing the lead on the project. They also have Tom Hill from Erickson Engineering and Ellen Parel, she is the Superintendent of District 46.
You're gonna have to hold the microphone. It's on, you just see it.
Pretend it's a big auditorium.
Alright.
There you go.
We are basically here, you laid it out very nicely for us, there's a text amendment that needs to take place and also we have the request of a special use permit. What we want to do is we want to, first of all, give you a little bit of background about the project and about the company doing the project, they just happen to be the same company taking the lead that did the District 127 over at the Graveslake High School, they did a roof mount and a ground mount for them. So it's a company that's familiar with solar power and familiar with going ahead and handling all of the issues that might come up, there was a disruption and the timing and all of that stuff. We also know that there is some questions from the engineer, we'd be happy to address those questions or apply, we're here to kind of go back and forth and talk about those issues that have come up and what we're gonna do to address them. And basically, we want to have a little bit of dialogue with the board, we want to make sure that we give you all the information that you need as well as, you know, present a little bit ourselves that we hope is informative for you.
Chris, what we'll probably do is allow the district to make their statements, even the concerns you have about the engineers letter and then when we testify or you'll have Mr. Groom respond to those and then we can have back and forth as necessary.
Perfect, okay, so we'll start it off and then we'll continue on with Kurt, he's gonna go ahead and he's gonna hand out a presentation for you guys, you can look through while he goes through, try to make it. Yeah, we'll make it as efficient as possible if you have any questions or concerns, obviously when the dialogue happens, feel free to ask questions.
Okay, thank you very much for having us here tonight. As Chris mentioned, he did the project for the high school district, and so we've taken a lot of what we learned on that and we're applying it to this district. They are doing a ground mount here at Prairie View, they are doing roof mounts as well at the middle school and also at the park. We're doing another ground mount at Frederick, so this is a multiple building project for us, same thing we did at the high school, we did roof mount at Central, roof mount at North, and a ground mount at North. Our company is, we're an energy service company, we do HVAC work, we're primarily K-12, but we have, we're growing pretty quick, our headquarters are in Indiana, but our background is with the, with the school districts, we have a lot of relationships there. Everybody asks why solar, solar is obviously a huge investment in the future of the district, there's financial stability, obviously this is a project that the district is gonna make money by implementing, not many projects, if any, where somebody brings them where they can actually make money on an annual basis, and this will bring them that vehicle to actually generate income versus always spending money. There's an educational piece, there's environmental, what this does is really locks in their utility rate going forward, doesn't mean that the utility rate would never change, what it means is that utility rate could go up and down, the smart years getting in effect this year at the end of this month, there is going to be spikes, and Tom Ed said it could be 10%, 15%, 20% in the near future, they don't, you don't know when, they were running, they're under a contract now, but in the future that could go up. If it does, it's gonna cost the district real money, with solar and them producing their own power, the rates could go up, but the rate of mission of producing solar would go up as well, so they're not gonna see the same effects that somebody that doesn't have solar on would. So when we say it locks in the rate, that's what we're talking about, it really is gonna help them achieve some financial benefit. Benefits is obviously, panels themselves are warranty for 25 years with an 80% production warranty, so that means 25 years from now they should be producing at least 85%. Technology hasn't changed over the last 50, 60, 70 years, panels are still producing, the crystalline panels, still the same thing everybody uses. What's gotten better is obviously the technology with the wattages that continues to grow and obviously installation costs have come way down along with manufacturing costs overseas and different things like that, that has really changed the market. What has made it so prevalent and so positive and so popular in Illinois is they implemented an SREC market, which is called the Solar Renewable Energy Credit. Basically, you pay at home, you pay at the village, they obviously pay on a monthly basis a renewable fee, it's on a front utility bill, and no one's been able to capture that, but the IPA, which is the Illinois Power Agency, has put together through the Renewable for the FLY, it's a lot of different mechanisms, sorry, a program that's basically mandated to offset some costs and help the district with future payments. So they're gonna be given a 15-year contract, be front-loaded with payments all on five years at a rate that has been determined by the IPA, which is a bonus. So not only are they gonna be producing their own solar and having energy savings, they're gonna have the demand savings because the highest demand peak day for them is going to change, it won't be the most expensive day, it'll shift to another day that's not as expensive, along with the SREC income, that's how we're able to make money on an annual basis. Our process is lengthy, we're an engineering-based company, so we're conservative to begin with, but we obviously have a lot of due diligence between going through the site, especially with the ground mount, we have hired Erickson Engineering to be our civil, to make sure that we're in the proper area, proper zone, we're out of floodplains, out of floodways, we're gonna be putting fencing up, all the different things that go into it. The design phase between our racket manufacturer and the civil engineer takes some time, and that's the phase where now we're always being permitting through the different villages. There's a site assessment, there's site approval, we have been contracted by the district pending these reviews and the positive outcome that we hope to see. There's a commissioning piece after installation, we're gonna continue to come back, it's electronics, so there's not a lot of moving parts, but it is, it is gonna take some tweaking and we do have, you know, inverters that we'll be monitoring on a daily basis to make sure that they're working properly. When we do an installation, we do multiple inverters, now what that means is if something were to happen to one inverter, the system would still run and produce solar and we wouldn't be down, we'd maybe lose one inverter with a string of 10, 15 panels, 20, how many are on it. When you do a single inverter system, that's when you get in trouble, if something goes bad, the whole system's down, so that's why you do the multiple inverters. But we will be commissioning that, there's an interconnection with Tom Ed, so tying that back in and making sure they're getting their credits, and then we monitor it and stay on top of it and help them with their SREC handles.
Sounds like over-sized Christmas lights. One goes out, they could all go out, except with their multiple inverters, one string goes out, one string goes out.
We might lose a couple, it's very, it doesn't happen often, but it would be a lot, a lot easier than having to replace all string, this way obviously we're gonna be able to tell which one it is, I know when these Christmas lights go out, you don't know which one would have happened and it'd be crazy, throw out the whole thing. I mentioned there's roof mount possibilities, in this case we're looking at a ground mount, we'll be pile screw driving and pile whatever the pillars, so we know construction to, to the land, vegetation will continue to grow, it will obviously slow the vegetation down, but it will, it will still grow and that's obviously positive to keep up with where we're at. The civil engineer has obviously looked at the property, and I'm gonna let him talk in a second, he'll show you exactly where it's gonna go and what his analysis was, but just make sure that we've looked at all of those possibilities and we're putting as much solar in as we can fit in the area that was provided. There's a STEM opportunity where the district can use this as a learning tool for students, we have a team with a national organization that we'll put them in contact with and they can use some really cool solar graphics. There's live monitoring and feeds, they're gonna get access to see what those inverters are producing on a daily basis, really creative things. I mentioned before we're conservative, so our calculations are conservative, we take 60 years of historical weather data in this area, and so we've taken into account all the possible negative effects of solar. This environment, actually the Midwest and Northern Midwest, is a wonderful environment for solar, this known as that, you know, this isn't the right environment, the fact is the way the electrons, the proton, the neutron, the way the science and techno of the solar works, it actually produces a higher ring, we don't get as many sunny days as you would out west or down south, but if you compare a sunny day there and a sunny day here, same conditions, we're gonna produce more based on how free-flowing winds are. So this is a very good environment, if we got more sunny days, it would be even better, but we've seen a lot of success. We've derated the panels to begin with, again for shading and soiling and any issues that might come up, there is inverter loss, there's line loss, obviously we have to run and bore back to the building, so between where the panels are gonna be and where the inverters and installations, we have to get it back to the power source, and there's gonna be a little bit of a loss there, we've taken all that into account in our, in our projections. Again, we're gonna monitor this, and the key is they're gonna be making money on an annual basis. It's hard to see, but that is what that solar calculation sheet is, the district's consuming about, let's call it round number 750,000 kW at the Prairie School, we're actually able to put in almost 800,000 kW. Now, Illinois allows for us to go a little bit above and we can aggregate that to another building, so the other buildings aren't producing at 100%, even though Prairie View will be producing a little bit more than 100%, we can, we can take the excess and put it towards one of the other buildings. And so, they should, they will always have a utility bill, but they will not be paying electrical costs at Prairie View if everything goes the way planned. There's energy savings I mentioned is about $52,000, demand savings is another six, SREC income is again, 15-year term, front-loaded for the first five years, and that is an additional almost $110,000. So the district is, is gonna be positive over $165,000 a year point. Now, they will have to pay it and they'll work out the financing, but ultimately we're really making money on this system, when you look at all four buildings as a whole, it's a wonderful project. Again, we're gonna pile drive to reduce any environmental impact, it's not gonna need soil, it's not gonna have to remove anything, it's very low reflective glass, it's not gonna harm any of the wildlife, there's basically no moving parts, so there's really no alone that needed. If we get a huge snow, someone might have to go out there with a broom and just sweep it off, but once the black glass heats up, it usually melts away anything that's there just because it's warmer, that's why the air temperature will keep. And obviously, yeah, we're gonna be monitoring that along with their staff. I put a picture of what the ground mount looks like, that's actually high school installation. The next page would be where we're projecting put Prairie View, design location. I have a picture of a ground mount here with what the actual racket looks like, and it's gonna be under 15 feet, typically sits about four or five feet off the ground, again, we were gonna be matching and looking at all codes and making sure that there's some options that we have, and then our plan is to put a fence up, which again, Tom's been talking about in a second, and a couple more pictures that show you what the ground racket looks like in the pictures. Just went really quick, gave you a lot of information, so I'm sure you have any questions, but before that I'd like to have Tom show you where we're, where it goes.
I have the Go-Graff survey as the prime for part of the site, I've got about 80% of it from my surveyor. We have an updated sketcher, I'd like to hand one of these out to each of you, and then if you guys agree with the highlights.
You will have to use the mic because we've recorded the whole year for your ears, but my concern's better.
Thank you, Ken, my name is Tom Hill, I am the Project Civil Engineer and I'm the Technical Director at Erickson Engineering. We are a civil engineering firm, landowner firm of offices in Graveslake, Chicago, Moheena, and we are in Southern Indiana as well, but Graveslake is our home office, and I am a Graveslake resident and living north, that's to Graveslake North Lake School, where we just put in a solar field, there's been so much buzz in our community about this, people are really proud to see the sort of thing happening in their town, they're proud to see the sort of thing happening with their school, and as a former Prairie View parent, I sent two kids through the school, I think you guys are very proud and think people will be excited to see this at the site as well. We are attempting to optimize and fit as much, as many panels as we can at the southeast corner of our site. We are getting zoning B1, we are acquiring a B1 property, the railroad tracks and Aitken Mount, the agricultural district to the south, we do not acquire any residents, we do not have any homes that will look at these panels in their backyards, and because of that, we think that this is a really good location to put this sort of system. A couple of challenges that we have back in this area is that there is a wetland and there is a flood plain, we have delineated the wetland and our schematic design here is updated to reflect that boundary, and we are not going to be doing any work within that wetland. Now, the installation of these solar panels does not involve tearing up the ground, it's kind of an odd process, we don't see a lot, there's a lot of towns haven't seen these yet, you know, it's sort of a new thing that's been coming into our area, but these, the posts that these racks are mounted on are driven into the ground, so there is no real disturbance, nevertheless, we are showing a double row of self-fence protection along the wetland as we typically do, although that will be serving more of the function of keeping the contractors and their vehicles out of the wetland more than anything else. We're not anticipating a lot of sedimenting runoff being generated from this sort of disturbance to the ground. There is a flood plain here and that flood plain has a little maximum depth on our system, this is based on Lake County's study of the area, it's not mapped per FEMA standards, but they mapped it on the Suave Creek study a number of years back, and based off of that, we have an elevation of approximately 79.52, not approximately exactly that. So we are installing panels over an area such that the lowest elevation is about three feet below that, so the maximum standing water we'll have in this field area is about three feet, the panels are gonna be picked up above that. I'm not sure exactly what that ultimate height's going to be, while we're also looking at the spill across 120 as well as another sort of fail-safe there just in case the water gets even higher, because we all know what we saw this July, for us civil engineers, it was pretty spectacular for everybody else, you know, it was a pretty good experience. We are looking at a couple of options as far as safety goes around these things, we originally were talking about a fence around the entire perimeter, now that we've got the total and we've gone out there and looked at this, we're thinking that we're probably just as an option, we are looking at a chain link fence across the north side of the area from the existing detention basin all the way over and then probably a hedgerow, think prickly foreign negotiations, something that nobody's ever gonna wanna try to get through. The backside and the southeastern corner would be open, but that's open to a wetland slash flood plain area, and it's also open to the railroad tracks, so we're not anticipating any sorts of acts of vandalism or damage to our property from that respect. There is, Greg has issued a review letter, done a preliminary review on the project, and it has a number of comments. I think one of the things that we would like to do, because this is such an unusual kind of project, this is not normal ground disturbance, it's not normal development or even structure placement per the regulations, we would request that for the, for the purposes of the special use permit, that the condition be added that the school district, that this project be approved, subject to the school district following all other requirements as are legally, that they're legally obligated to follow. And we pressed that, it said just approve the entire, because there are some watershed development comments in there, and we sort of don't wanna pull in maybe that conversation, but permanent process beyond what we think the true standards are that we're going to be held to.
Let me, or say, just to, like, just for, you, you have seen in your packet the Graves letter and the conditions, and we were, I was set to recommend this evening that we accept, accept this as one member of the zoning commission, that we accept their proposal as Greg's letter, the parts Greg's letters were completed appropriately. We do have time, and we may allow the engineers after the presentation and generational talk about, is there any give and take, is there another way for us to work it, still to complete the project tonight, and approve it at the board meeting, if that's on the board's sort of decides, but we'll have time between the meeting, if we're amenable, if these three gentlemen can work out an agreement, and then that would be in the motion to us in the board meeting. Greg will have a chance to talk to that as will this gentleman, to share the concerns, and we may have a little give and take here, but I just wanted to give you that background.
Can I ask a question as long as you're up? Why don't we, just a quick question, are we saying that the eight conditions in this letter from Armiston have not yet been addressed, and so what we're essentially saying, we would approve this subject to the clearance of these eight provisions?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't interrupt you, please go ahead.
Oh, you're fine, and that's basically what we've got here, again, the heights of these panels, I believe the maximum height for an accessory structure are at least 10 foot or so, you know, we expect to be under that, we only have three feet of ponding out here, I believe there's another 18 inches or so until the road spills, but we're gonna be building everything above that flood plain elevation, the conduits and everything are going to be waterproof, they're gonna be rated for that, and the panels themselves will be set up high enough so that we can function in this flood plain area. And this is very similar to the project over at Graveslake North, which is also in a flood plain, and very similar, but we're also going through it further, and we're seeing more and more of these happening nationally at VA sites, sometimes put in detention basins, there, people are finding that to be a productive sort of co-use of those areas, that they also provide that stormwater management, a lot of quality benefits, but are also providing a source of green and renewable power.
Any questions at this point prior to the village's testimonies for the board?
I didn't.
John?
I noted, one of the things that you were doing when you did the board meeting at the high school, and they have a wood fence, and they're by the decision to go with a chain link rather than a wood one here.
The wood was put up at a request because of the neighbors, because there are homes surrounding it, we have, two-thirds of that is a chain link fence, but the only areas that you can see from the homes are the wood, the natural wood fence, we're doing the same thing at the Frederick campus, where we're putting up a wood fence where the homes are, and it'll be chain link the rest of the way. It will not have a top ring, so the fence would base could be almost impossible if really impossible to climb.
How tall of a fence are you planning?
Eight to 10 feet, depending on, you know, I think Graveslake's is an eight-foot fence.
Graveslake's an eight?
I think it's an eight, eight to 10.
It'll have to depend on the code.
Yeah, we will, absolutely, we'll match all of them.
How they're legal, tall of a plant.
Yeah, we'll match all of them.
Eighty-two feet.
For the superintendent, Chris. I spent 32 years of public education and I understand that, no matter what you build, if you build- that, no matter what you build, if you build, they will call. The kids will get there on their own in some way and somehow. I'm not saying that it needs to be surrounded, but. All right, any other questions from the board?
Yes. You're saying that the school district is going to make money? Are you sure you're not saying save money? I mean, otherwise, how are they going to make money on this deal?
They are definitely going to be saving money, absolutely. But with our projections, they're going to be saving more between energy savings, demand savings, and SREC income than what they're actually.
What was that last name?
That's that solar renewable energy credit. It's called the SREC. When we secure the SRECs for the district, they will be in a position where they'll be making money. Now, there will be a term, there will be a period of time in the model where they will not be making much because they have to pay off the debt for the installation cost. But between all the energy savings for the four projects, the SREC income and the demand savings, they're in a positive for every year. Again, some years it may only be five to ten thousand dollars. Again, these are conservative numbers, we would expect them to be more. But they're still making money or nothing else, they're breaking even. And ultimately, once it's paid off, that's when we'll start to see a windfall of cash.
Of savings, not additional energy?
Sure. Well, it's both. It's both because they won't be paying.
Once the payments are done, then they move into the product.
Correct.
Because they're saving.
Saving so much compared to what they are spending now.
Yeah, so it's just a savings, not an increase in income.
You're not setting power back into the trade and capital is not paying for the powers.
Well, we're not going over a hundred percent because they have, they have other buildings that we're not doing solar. So district wide, this is a district wide project, obviously it's broken out for the villages, each village, but district wide, we're not going over a hundred percent. But for the buildings that we're doing, we're, I think, it's about sixty-five to seventy percent of their utility bills goes away. So their utility spend is quite a bit, that's gone.
So they have more money to spend on other things?
More money to spend on other things. Demand savings changes, but then the SREC income is actual income that the district will be, will be making. And that is something that we added altogether, they become very positive. It's front loaded, so the first few years are going to be really positive. It takes a dip and then it's back front loaded again. And by then, the project is paid off and it's just, it's just money that the district will be earning.
You had mentioned that the only thing going in the ground, if I understood correctly, would be the pile driving, the mounts. The conduit, the water tube conduit is at an above ground or is that?
Will be boring back to the building, so that'll be underground.
Okay, very good. Is that a direct area?
Yes, I believe so.
Other questions from the board? We'll have more chances as we go on, but go ahead, sir.
Two quick questions. You mentioned a silk fence. I assume that's on the portion that's contiguous or adjacent to the railroad tracks. Can I assume then that you're just putting that there temporarily and make sure that there's no?
Yeah, let me clarify that the silk fence will be going adjacent to the wetland. We have an off-site wetland that's in this area here and we'll be putting that along the disturbance, along the area of wetland.
So I assume that when the project is completed, you take that silk fence down?
Yes, sir.
Can the site be seen from room one?
We have looked at that from the street. Nobody is ever going to see that when they're driving. If somebody was walking and they stopped and they looked in between a couple trees, maybe at the right time of year, you might see it, but it is, it's lost behind the wall.
Okay, and one other question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that if it snows, you're going to have somebody come out there and use a dust, dust it off. But is snow or rain or any precipitation going to affect the efficiency of the use of the?
That's a great question. The rain actually helps because that's what we use to naturally clean the panels because, you know, dusting, we might get on there. It's a coated glass, so most everything's going to slide right off. At a ground mount level, we're going to have a much higher angle as well. So again, it's going to be hard for anything to stick. As long as the sun is out and those panels are heating up, the snow isn't going to catch. Where we're going to get in trouble would be a three or four foot, you know, one of the big Midwest snows, which we haven't had in a while, we might get one. Then we want to make, yeah, exactly. We want to make sure then that somebody potentially, you know, once it's done snowing, would go out there and maybe remove them off. The reason is you're at, the production at that point would be very low. That would, but we've taken, we've taken those projections already into our model. So before we even said we could produce this much, we've done that. You don't have the sheet, but this is the model and it's a belter. You can see that it's obviously in the winter months where we're lower, summer we're much higher. This projection doesn't work if it rains every day in the summer. But this is what historical weather in this area for the last fifty, sixty years has told us and that's what we put in.
I assume where you're putting this is a grassy area to begin with, right? Is there any consideration that the grass is going to grow unless they mow it or weed whack it?
The grass?
Could cover this stuff?
Vegetation should still grow, but it's going to be very slow. It shouldn't be much of an issue. They do make a, which is not recommended, I think it'd be easier for somebody to go out there with a weed whacker if it got really bad. But they do make a little robotic grass cutter under the solar. Now, that is used, again, more in the west coast where they have a lot more sunny days.
School district is going to stay ecological, higher goals.
Good idea. Thank you.
Any other questions in the board at this moment?
This is going to power the entire school? I mean, obviously with some precautions, but for the most part, it's going to be directly powering the school or is it going to power batteries and then the batteries will power the school?
No, this case it will run directly back into the building and power the, it's, if something were to happen, the district will always have power between comm ed and solar. But if comm ed went out, they'd still be producing solar, so they'd still be going. But every eight seconds, it's milliseconds, it flips back and forth, multi liters. We're getting a little out of my pay grade, I'm not the engineer on the job, but basically it's running back, it's converting the DC power, which is the power of the sun, into AC, which is what everybody uses when you plug in, you know, your cell phone charger or your hair dryer or whatever, your TV.
Just if most of the electricity were being generated in the summer months, when the school's not functioning, is there just to save the energy, the electricity somehow so that you can use it during the school year?
Absolutely, that's why solar is doing so well. Because the district itself uses more of their power in the fall and in the winter months and stuff. The meter's going to spin backwards in the summer when they're producing the most. And it's also when they're consuming the least, so the meter's really going to pick up, you're going to get a, remember it's on a yearly basis. And at the end, then when they need to start using it, that's when the meter starts catching up. For the year, this building should produce what it needs. Now, in our projections, we have a one-time use consumption, we don't need to reset. Kansas Ardena will continue to grow, so every year it may not produce a hundred percent. But we know we're going to get very close to a hundred at this building based on how much we can put in, in the ground mound.
So you're getting a credit for that, but you don't have a battery that's storing any storage?
Battery storage is not where the technology needs to be yet and the cost is very expensive. And they're not producing enough where we want to do a battery anyways. Not to mention what I said before, Illinois elects an aggregate throughout the district. So if you think of it as a district project, this one building is producing a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and six percent of the electrical cost, utility cost. But that extra five, six, seven percent is going to go to offset another building in the district.
All right. Stay close to the mic or take it with you. Thank you for your presentation. Now, well, that presentation, the village testimony, which in this case, Mr. Burnham, it's you.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor. Just so everybody has a kind of frame of reference here, we have this plan that you handed out with, they had, it's in seat one, they did twelve, five, seventeen. The one that I actually generated this review letter was slightly different, it dated October twenty, twenty seventeen. So this particular plan they handed out today does incorporate a lot of the comments of one through eight from my review letter. Specifically, the wetland is delineated on here, the high water elevation is put on here, it's got the start to the road control plan with the silk fence. So these items were not on a previous version, but heading in the right direction. I guess the core issue here is that with the Lake County Stormwater Management, any development over five thousand square feet.
You know, I want to make sure the engineer here is just curious as the issue.
That's why we could use, so.
I just mentioned that we reviewed a previous version of the plan and there's, I see more information on the plan we handed out today, which is a step in the right direction with the various wetlands, high water elevation and silk fencing. I guess the core would be interpretation for the watershed development permit is that any development that over five thousand square feet requires a stormwater permit. On this particular application, it's not going to be, we'll just say like detention or anything like that. I would consider these panels, I mean, they're spaced properly and the water just kind of runs off and pours into the grass all over. But it does kick in in the erosion control requirements and also the, because we're adjacent to a wetland here as far as buffer requirements. And what I'm asking for is that a delineation be done, which it looks like it was. Could be something simple in regard to like the air photo determination. A lot of times a wetland consultant can look at the air photo and make a reasonable determination. And then I also want something that I can rely on in regard to allowable uses in the buffer, something from your consultant that we can make interpretation, make, rely on that interpretation requirements.
Greg, can you explain buffers on the forest place?
Yeah, where the wetland delineation is, that's where the wetland type plants, what's called rekanarian grass or sedge meadow plants are. So there's a definite demarcation where those plants exist and where they don't. And then the county ordinance actually specifies that it's not just where the wetland is, but distance either twenty feet, thirty feet in some cases, or heated wetland up to a hundred feet where there's a buffer area. Or you want to basically keep housing away from that, keep generally development away from that. In this particular case, you know, this is, what would you say, unusual? You know, it's not a house, it's not a habitable, habitable structure. There's grass still underneath these things, if you look at the pictures, it's just a, just a post. So we are going to have to, I want somebody from your team to look at the ordinance with regard to the buffer requirements and make a rapid determination that this thing is an allowable use in the buffer. So the, like I said, the Lake County ordinance says that five thousand square feet is, kind of kicks over the requirement for a permit. This thing, like I said, my frame of reference when I first reviewed this plan was if you notice on Route thirty-one, it's in Kennedy County, I worked on that one, it's Shaw Center, they have solar panels. It's part of Kennedy County College and underneath that, they have the silk fence, they have the solar panels, but they, in their particular application, they would grab it and revolve it. Without any other information on the plan, you know, we just wanted to clarify what you're doing and it seems like you've done that tonight. And then also for what we do is that we're not the end goal, end warrant of this. Haynesville's a certified community, we are the engineers for Haynesville, but we get audit. As a matter of fact, we actually today have turned in our self certification and self audit to Lake County Stormwater and they will review it, they ask how many permits we did, what type we did. And they will review our file every three to five years. And if somebody comes out here complaining and sees this and says, you should have required a permit, we didn't, you know, those are items that we can lose our certification for. You might have some different opinion as to the five thousand square feet, if we actually meet that or not. Looking at these pictures, you know, you get the single post, it looks like it's only six square inches by the time you ditch one of these panels. I'd be willing to send the information we have, send it over to Kurt Wolford, he's over there at Lake County SMC. And if he concurs that, you know, you really don't need a stormwater management permit for this, you know, so be it. I've known Kurt for a number of years, I think he would agree that this would, at least will definitely require the stormwater management permit to see erosion control version. And I can't imagine that the detention involved in this thing, the ground cover maintaining as it is. So that's what we're, that's what I'm looking for, these eight comments. And you've got probably about half of them already started or completed, but it's just the permitting process just needs to be followed, in my opinion.
All right, here's, I've got two questions from the board, if there are any questions for Greg. And then Mr. Rock has an idea how we may be able to move forward. Questions from the board?
A question about the vegetation. It sounded to me like you plan to just leave the grass there and whatever happens, happens, but not put in any shade tolerant plants or anything. Is that acceptable, Greg?
I'm going to have to rely on their past experience on this, with the applicant, I mean, obviously the, you know, there's space between these panels. You know, I know there's some parts of my lawn that only get three hours of sun every day. I mean, I think it's probably analogous to that situation. So I would say it's acceptable.
So before we move forward, is there anyone in the audience that has a comment or a question? All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you want Tom to answer the buffer question now or is that earlier?
Please respond.
Again, as I said before, I don't necessarily want to get too technical here with some of the language, you know, in the order itself, but we're certainly would want to meet with you afterwards and identify with you, with you as a part of that determination of what are the requirements that the school district literally asked about and we certainly talked about those.
Here's my suggestion, Mr. Rock, feel free to correct me if I go astray, that we proceed with this, with development recommendation here. And then in between this meeting and the next, the two engineers, Mr. Rock, meet another, work out the actual language for the approval of the special, for the testament and the special use permit so that the caveats that Greg is concerned about will be covered, yet we don't necessarily restrict, we wait till we get the proper interpretation from the parties involved. Does that make sense?
My next question.
Five bucks.
Put it on my bill.
Okay.
Did I understand you that you're only going to put a fence on the north side? You're not going to surround the whole thing, whereas you surrounded the whole thing in the high schools. And as Jerry said, if kids can find a way, they're going to find a way to get into it.
Correct. We are putting what we believe is going to effectively be an impassable barrier. We are going to have a fence on the south side of the school and then when we get down into the floodplain area, we're looking to put some sort of individual vegetative barrier, think prickly bushes, things like that. So the only access will be coming off of the railroad side or probably these through floodplain and floodplain sort of area. We do not have any school walkers here, which is something that we've had an issue with at other sites. And we have specifically wanted full security fencing because of that. We don't want this shit going on. But given the age of the kids at the school, the fact that we do not have walkers coming through the area, that's why that's what we are approaching as a minimum for security. And we think we need to readdress that at some point in the future. If someone's getting back there and spraying and packing these things over, we'll certainly revisit that. we'll certainly revisit that.
Questions, comments?
I'm not sure there's a need for me to lead you to this one, to work out the language. I think what we're looking at essentially, now we're talking about the special use permit, not the text amendment. The text amendment is pretty straightforward. The village board has, this commission and the village board has that language and ordinance that they're reviewing. We've also, but within that ordinance is also language for the special use permit. And there are going to be conditions in that special use permit. I think we can do this pretty quickly. If it turns out we can't, we can do it afterward. But the first one is, the first condition that we're advising is that the solar entry system shall be constructed in accordance with the site plan attached as of today. That's the site plan you submitted as a, as the school district. The second one, we add language in here that said, prior to beginning work on the solar energy system, the petitioner shall comply with the comments and recommendations of village engineer Greg Groan as stated in his letter of mayor, Mayor Jared Daly, dated November 7, 2017. I think maybe what we want to do is just to wordsmith a little bit is to say the petitioner shall satisfactorily address the comments and recommendations of village engineer Greg Groom. So that we understand that maybe, some of those have already been addressed in the fact that you've submitted some additional information tonight, but that there are additional concerns that haven't been addressed by them. So if that language is acceptable to everybody.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
That's fine, okay. And then the third would just be that the permit is subject to full co-review of the construction documents by the village building official. That will essentially be the three conditions we recommend. If everybody's, if everybody finds those acceptable, I'm adding my recommendation.
Do you need a minute to talk, caution?
We're okay.
Nick, we're fine.
Fine? We have thumbs up from Greg and from.